You walked in. Okay, so there's probably a decent amount of people?
Yeah, they were.
Out to the door, oh, good.
Want to get ready? And I'm just at the end of the floor. Okay? Okay, if you guys will.
Get the one with the cushions?
I didn't bring a pan, I'm gonna grab one.
I got you.
You got one?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
That's gonna work.
I wonder if it's not to pass. I'm hoping I can still collect on cannabis grant.
I believe.
I think I can.
Yeah, either you, I think, looked at, or somebody did look into that.
I'm pretty sure I did.
Right, yeah. There are plenty of seats up here if anybody wants to sit.
Eleven chairs here, thirteen.
Scared of Jen. Scared of you.
End is near.
We're not there yet? We're not there yet? We're not there yet? Okay.
All right, we're gonna bring this special town meeting to order. If everyone would please silence and shut off your cellphones, we would appreciate it. James Darren, a resident of the town of Parsonsfield in the county of Park, state of Maine, greetings. In the name of the state of Maine, you are hereby required to warn and notify the inhabitants of the town of Parsonsfield in said county and state qualified to vote by law in town affairs to meet at the town office at 634 North Road in Parsonsfield on Thursday, the 3rd of October, A.D. 2024, at 6:00 P.M. to act on Articles 1 through 3 set out as follows. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Are there any nominations?
nominate Norman Blake.
Second?
Second.
Can at least three people vote for moderator, please? Can at least three people vote, please?
Okay.
All right. We have three votes for Mr. Norman Blake, Norman?
Getting harder to get my three votes anymore.
Do you, Norman Blake, swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Maine so long as you shall continue to be a citizen thereof?
Yes, I do.
Do you, Norman Blake, swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent upon you as moderator of this meeting in the town of Parsonsfield according to the Constitution and laws of the state of Maine so help you God?
Yes, I will.
For yours, sir.
Okay, thank you, Danielle. For those who don't know, I'm Norman Blake. I'm the migrant moderator from the town of Baldwin. I'm seeing a lot of new faces that I don't see here at regular town meeting. Basically, we will run this meeting, as is the case almost everywhere in Maine, according to the rules of the Maine Moderator's Manual as promulgated by the Maine Municipal Association. It's a, a collection of the rules and principles that have guided town meetings as well as special town meetings in Maine for a couple centuries. They work out pretty well. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine pages, you're not responsible for knowing all of them. The main thing to know is that the moderator runs the meeting. You may speak when you're recognized by the moderator. If you want to be recognized, just stick your yellow card in the air and, and I'll see you and point you out. It's my job to make sure that everybody is heard. One of the criticisms I occasionally hear about my work is that I let too many people talk too long. That's what town meeting is for. It's for you to be heard. If, when you're recognized, make a comment. It helps to stand up, but you don't have to, but please, speak right up. You took the trouble to, to come here, we need to hear from you. And the other folks took the trouble to come here, partly so they can hear what you have to say. I think that's all the preliminaries we need to do. So we'll get right going to Article 2. Shall ordinances entitled 2024 Amendments to the Town of Parsonsfield Land Use and Development Ordinance Regarding Cannabis Facilities and Town of Parsonsfield Cannabis Facility Licensing Ordinance be enacted? Do I hear a motion?
Removed.
Moved, seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Yes, sir?
I just need clarification on two things. I'm looking at the draft Town Parsonsfield Cannabis Facility Licensing Ordinance. And in one section, it says, notwithstanding the foregoing, the adoption of this ordinance shall not be interpreted to permit the establishment of adult-use cannabis, and so on, so forth. And then, two lines down, it defines cannabis facilities as all of those things that are not to be... So, on the one hand, we're supposed to vote for a cannabis facility. On the other hand, it's saying, notwithstanding the adoption of all of these things, medical cannabis, medical cannabis testing facility, and so on. Then we come down here and define cannabis facility. And then if you look at the chart where the zoning things are, we are zoning in some of the things that this one paragraph says should not be considered. The other paragraph defines it just the opposite. That's one point I want to make. The other point I want to make is that this goes all the way back to what we struggled with over and over and over again for two or three decades. And that is the conflict between how we define village and how we define village residential. In village, it reads... "The purpose of this district is to preserve the historic villages in Parsonsfield and to promote the traditional village atmosphere that is common to New England towns. This district allows the mixed use of residential, commercial, and institution." Well, the first part of that sentence, and the only part that's missing in village residential is to preserve the historic villages in Parsonsfield. Well, we have seven of them. And only, I think, one or two are zoned village. The other villages are zoned village residential. Now, the whole debate, for as long as I lived in this town, has been, what do you want the town to look like as it grows? Our growth is mostly residential, and we are very fortunate in this town because our town doubles in population with seasonal residences. They pay lots of taxes but don't have kids. If they did, our town would go broke. Because for every new residence, the town collects a dollar in taxes, and the outlay is a dollar and a quarter, according to all the research I did. All right, so now, we've got to ask ourselves, do we want to expand with more businesses other villages in this town in a way that Kizer Fall Village is being expanded? And to me, those questions have never been properly resolved, and that is what's making me proud to vote against this.
Do the selectmen have a comment on the first part of the gentleman's question?
John, were you reading from Section 2?
I was.
"Notwithstanding the foregoing, the adoption of this ordinance shall not be interpreted to permit the establishment or operation of an adult-use cannabis cultivation facility Tier 3 or Tier 4."
That's right, that's the first part.
Right. A medical cannabis, a medical cannabis caregiver retail store also is not included.
Now, read the definition of cannabis facility, two lines down.
I've read it many times.
Okay, so now, what are we voting on?
Allowing an adult-use recreational cultivation facility or retail store, cultivation facility being Tier 1 or 2.
Okay, so now, when you get to the chart on village, village residential, and this stuff in bold, the first one says adult-use cannabis product manufacturing facility, then it says adult-use cannabis testing facility, and then it says medical cannabis caregiver facility. All of those are conditionally allowed. And then, medical cannabis testing facility is not allowed. So, I don't know how anyone can have a clear understanding of what exactly they're voting on.
Medical use. I, my zoning says medical cannabis caregiver store is not allowed, nor is manufacturing facility, nor is testing facility, that's...
And what does C mean under village and village residential in the chart?
Conditional use, meaning they have to go to the planning board.
Okay, so you have to go to the planning board for all of these four things listed in bold and underlined. Which seems to contradict the, 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 out of Section 2 in, in the ordinance.
Yeah. Was that just a definition?
Yeah, well, no.
I don't think that it was.
We're looking at the fine print.
Medical, 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 registered dispensary. I don't see, I don't...
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, John, if you had the most recent draft.
I read it off the town website.
Okay, okay. Because what, well, what I have, and I believe it's what was sent to go on the website, is that the adult-use cannabis store cultivation facility Tier 1 and 2, products manufacturing and testing facilities are all conditional uses. And any of the medical, aside from caregiver, which the state regulates, are not allowed.
And what is the notwithstanding paragraph said?
Well, we don't have control over medical cannabis caregiver facilities. Those are allowed by, by state. Municipalities can't limit those.
Excuse me, I, I didn't hear.
Jen again, he didn't hear you.
We can't limit medical cannabis caregiver facilities, that's a state regulation.
Yeah.
Right.
All right, so now, are we voting on what?
Well...
We've, we've gone over this a few times. We're voting on allowing adult-use cannabis cultivation facilities Tier 1 or 2. Not medical cannabis caregiver retail stores, not manufacturing facilities, which I have, I mean, my zoning says...
But do you, do you have...
Let, let her finish, John.
Yeah, maybe, maybe you don't have the most up to date, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay, but I got this right off the town website.
And I'm on the town, town's website right now.
It says adult-use cannabis manufacturing facility, conditional, conditional village and village residential.
Right.
So that's what, that's what we're voting to approve?
Yes, whatever's in the zoning amendment, whatever's in bold, yes.
Okay.
Further questions? Yes, sir? Before I get started, I want to recognize the hard work that went into this. And having been a member of the town government, planning board for a number of years, I know that the knee-jerk response to the public is to think that everything you guys do is garbage. So, I don't want to fall into that trap, but I do have some questions. Taking it back and off what John said, 6D on this mentions the goals of the ordinance, that's all I need to ask you. It's unclear to me, after having read and... Andy, we, we had a request for you to crank up the volume. 6D mentions the goals of the ordinance. After reading and rereading this, it's unclear to me, like John said, what exactly those goals are. This should be written clearly, so we know what we're voting for. It's very obscure, and I'm talking about somebody who's read through lots of this stuff. I don't know how many people in this room have even read this. It's written by lawyers, so it's pretty hard to understand. Correct. We're not lawyers. So, that's my first question to you, is what are the goals stated succinctly without tables, without zoning? What does this allow for?
It allows for the town to license cannabis facilities, and it allows a change to the zoning, to allow the bolded facilities that are on the zoning amendment table.
Okay, so by voting for this, you're voting to allow facilities that are not allowed now, because we voted it down last time around.
Correct.
Okay, coming down to 6F. Reads like this, uh... Crank it up, Andy, please. Crank up the volume. 6F reads that... Renewals, okay? If they grant a license to one of these facilities, when they reconsider it, the select board shall solicit and consider the opinions of the fire chief, code enforcement officer, in its review of an application to renew a cannabis facility license, but apparently not the public at large, us, okay? So now, we're closing this, this whole process down into a narrower scope, and that's the next thing.
Can I interrupt that for a second?
You want, can you address that specific? Address it one by one, go ahead. No, it'll be easier that way. Yeah, okay.
The renewal means that a facility has already gone through the process of notifying a butters, having a public hearing, having input from the town, going through a pretty stringent permit application. So, there is the time for the public, the town, or anybody that wants to be involved, to say what it is they need to say about that.
Correct. But what you're saying is, in the interim between when they're licensed and when they go for renewal, if there are complaints, those complaints only be considered by these two officers, by an officer of the town and who else? The fire chief, but not the public. So you're closing, you're closing the...
I believe the public can make their complaints to those people that will be taken into consideration.
I don't want to quibble about that one, but I'm just noting that. 9A, cannabis facilities, agents and employees shall at any reasonable time permit inspection of the licensed premises by agents of the town, if necessary. Some question is... Like who? The CEO? Who's already overworked? Who's gonna do this? You're setting up, okay, so that's, that's my question, who's gonna do the inspections?
The CEO.
Yep.
We have a deputy CEO.
Yeah.
And we also have the Office of Cannabis Policy.
Can you speak up, please?
Me?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a CEO, a deputy CEO, and we have the Office of Cannabis Policy, who also sends inspectors out.
Okay. Coming along to 10B, I see the same pattern occurring. An applicant requesting a license for one of these facilities goes before the committee, okay, not the planning board. In my experience at town government, this kind of thing has always been dealt with by a planning board. So, it looks to me like, and maybe I'm wrong, but it looks to me that the select board is here aggregating, taking the responsibilities of the planning board on itself, and expanding its realm of power.
Can I?
David.
Well, every one of these operations requires a conditional use permit from the planning board. Planning board obviously has oversight of that and direct input for that. The license itself comes to the select board, and the select board is the one that then goes through the final review. And obviously, this, the planning board's input would be vital to that.
Um, okay, that's the answer. Anything else, Andy? I've got a couple more. Okay. 11A, not defined. Cannabis facilities shall not employ the use of inherently dangerous substances. Very vague. It's just like a CYA, I'm close. I don't want to quibble about that one, that doesn't mean anything. Here's the real one. It's the thing that really worries me, okay? When we sat on the planning board, we were told pretty, pretty clearly, and what our mandate was to avoid lawsuits to this town, okay? And we acted in accord with that, to save the town legal fees, which we pay. Here it says, "Any agreed party may appeal a decision of the select board under this ordinance to the Superior Court, not to a town board." Every other procedure in this town dealing with variances, dealing with permits, is dealt with by a town board, the zoning board of appeals. There's no provision for that. The kind of people that are gonna be running this, if they use this ordinance, are gonna have deep pockets, and we're looking at opening the door, pointing them right at the Superior Court. Any comment on that?
Yeah. The appeals board has a very strict thing, a very strict set of guidelines that can be appealed to it. Okay? And this is not one of those things.
So then, there is no appeal?
The appeal is to the Superior Court. There's no appeal to the town, that's correct.
But you just said that they can't appeal this to Superior Court, so basically, functionally, they can appeal it.
No, I didn't say they can't appeal it to Superior Court, I said they, they can't appeal it to our appeals board. Appeals board does not have jurisdiction. They can, as it says, they can go to Superior Court.
Okay. There may be a...
Andy, if you might say something also?
Okay.
Inherently dangerous substances.
Please, please speak right up.
Inherent, inherently dangerous substances are defined by them being statute, and there is a reference in there to that, you can go in and then...
Well, okay, I'm gonna wrap up by, by coming off of that. If you want an informed public, you can't be referring us to MSRA's, we don't have them. And a lot of us don't have the time or the inclination to dig them out. You gotta put the stuff in here. Give us the information, not a referral to an ordinance. I just end up by saying, I think this town doesn't need any more marijuana facilities. We got the right to grow what we need for home use, I think that's the direction we need to come from. I find this, this ordinance very suspicious in a lot of ways. I'm not gonna burden you with my paranoia, but I think it looks more like it's geared towards the business community than the rest of us. Okay, I'm done, thank you. Gentlemen in the back.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to know who the author was of this ordinance. In my experience, and I've had a few years, this is one of the worst-written ordinances I've ever seen. It's contradictory, and I'll tell you, if the last cause is to go to Superior Court, now, I'm no lawyer, but I don't think this is gonna hold muster. This, this whole ordinance, I, I have a feeling I know who wrote it. And my experience with that organization has never been good. So, I just want to tell everybody here that this ordinance, it's non-understanding, it doesn't get right to the root problem for, you know, what we actually want and not want. This, and the way you two have been taking questions, I don't think you know either.
Would anyone on the select board like to respond to Todd's question?
We can answer that this was primarily...
Todd, let, let them answer.
This was primarily put together by our town attorney, Ben McCall. We had some guidelines that we suggested, and then he had numerous suggestions and did most of the authoring.
You had your hand up.
Okay, thank you.
Please, please, speak right up, crank it up.
Speak right up, I'm just curious why this couldn't have gone to the November election as a secret ballot, where we know there would be a higher voter turnout?
We'll answer that.
Yep.
It was talked about, but... Because of the discussions that we're having right now, our annual town meeting probably would have gone on for a very long time, but we...
Well, I wasn't...
She's talking about November.
Oh, oh, I see.
Question was November 5.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good question. Yep.
Yeah, I think secret ballot would have been best.
Um, it doesn't, can I mention that or not? You can mention it, yep.
We, we can still go that way in, in this assembly by a majority vote of, of those registered voters here, you can...
You only have the turn, this is the voter term.
Yeah. If, if you want a secret ballot, we can, we can quite probably make that happen. I saw...
I wasn't asking for a secret ballot, I was just commenting that during a presidential election in November, you would get a much higher voter turnout.
Everybody will be there. Yes, sir?
Same question she had, along the same lines. When we, when we voted on this type of... A few years ago.
Mike, Mike. Yeah, please continue.
We had, it wasn't an ordinance, but we had a vote that the state required. And you came over here and you got a ballot, you voted, and we had a hall that was open for several hours. Now, you restricted it to a smaller group in a limited amount of time. And from living in this town for quite a few years and looking at the turnout, people that, I don't think you're getting, getting the representation... I don't think you're getting the representation of the town of Parsonsfield that you ought to have on a subject that people are concerned about. Because I see, it's a big turnout, but we were well over 200 people voted on this before. And because you've limited it to this type of group and how you ran it this year, you have limited a lot of citizens in this town. They're not being able to access to vote. People in this town, like I did, travel an hour and a half to work, and they can't be back in this town at 6 o'clock at night. You guys had a poll that was open in the afternoon till 8 o'clock at night when we voted on this before.
Okay.
I just had...
Just a sec. I'm getting people in order. I'll get back. Yes, sir.
So the gentleman is correct. This is the biggest turnout that I've seen in numbers of years for any question that comes up in Parsonsfield. However, Parsonsfield has always been a town that operates with the town meeting model. We don't do secret ballots. We typically don't have questions on, you know, the state elections or any of those things. Most of what we do happens and gets decided by the people who show up. And I don't think that this should be in any way different. I think even discussing a secret ballot just takes away the transparency that it's really something that's, you know, really important to me here in the town of Parsonsfield. I mean, the reality is, is not a single person or not a single thing that's get said tonight is going to change anybody's mind. We've all decided, we all are on one side or the other. Own your opinion, vote your conscience, and let's move on with our lives. And that's my piece.
Gentlemen way in the back. Corey, yes, sir?
Thank you for organizing me. I'm unfamiliar with the main regulations about how the business is being done, so forgive me if I get something wrong here. Can we make a motion to table this and then do this in November at the election? That way, people who couldn't be here, like my wife wanted to be here tonight, but she had me out and we didn't know until later, could all vote. We can get the number of votes we got the last two times we did this. And if it's possible and if it's allowed, I'd like to make that a motion that we table this and vote on this the way we did the last two times. Thank you.
I'm thinking.
Yeah. We're past deadlines for November absentee.
Table it then until next November.
There are statutory limitations in Maine and probably everywhere else on the amount of headroom you have to have before you can schedule, I believe it would have to be another public hearing, and then enough time to get it on the November 5 ballot.
Not invalid then, or...
What?
Is my notion invalid then, or...
Yes, because we don't have the statutory time to do it. You need quite a bit of headroom for the various notifications and hearings. It's a good thought. By no means are you out of order, and it's a good thought. I'll get to you in a minute. There's a gentleman here that I haven't heard from. Just FYI, if I've already heard from somebody on a particular article and I see a hand from somebody that I haven't, that person will get priority. However, we'll get back to you. So I'm not being mean. Yes, sir?
I'm just wondering how much time that you gave us to even decide on this. You didn't give us much time to begin with. I mean, it just started a couple of weeks ago, and all of a sudden, bang. We got to be here, and we got to remove that mess. Any understanding?
Jen can answer that.
But we had...
We don't have a lot of time to, you know, digest that.
Jen's going to comment on that.
We did have a public hearing on this. When was it? Back in August?
Early August.
Early August, there was a public hearing. I don't think that as many people showed up as we have now, but there was definitely notification in not only social media, but the shopping guide, town website. It's been on our select board meetings frequently. We've discussed it.
And then from August, which wasn't that far away, only a month ago, a little more than a month ago, all of this just came about in a month, and now we got to decide by tonight?
There's been time in between the public hearing and tonight to think about everything that was presented at the public hearing, which is what you're voting on tonight, everything that we presented at that time as well, along with people's opinions or how they felt.
Yeah, I just, all right. I just feel like the whole thing is just being rushed through.
Back to you, yes.
I have two things.
Bring it up, please.
I have two things. One, to the gentleman who spoke of town meeting in Parsonsfield, I just want to point out that town meetings are governed under Title 30A. So the select board has the authority to either call a special town meeting or there's your annual town meeting, which happens every year. So it's the select board's authority to call an open town meeting or a closed one. Just FYI. My other question is, under zoning board appeals, because Andy had brought up that in this ordinance, you can only appeal to Superior Court. But in the lineman zoning ordinance as it stands right now, under Section 6, I think, or under appeal, Section 2A-1, it says any decision made by the planning board has to be made to the zoning board appeals or has to be appealed to the zoning board appeals. So if you're getting a conditional use permit by the planning board, how does that... It seems like there's a confliction here. If you can't appeal to the DVA, the conditional use permit, but you only can go to the Superior Court. I think it's kind of jumping over.
David.
Yeah. You are right. And the appeal that's mentioned in the licensing ordinance is at the select board level. Select board is the final authority for the licensing. If the conditional use permit is denied and wants to be appealed, that indeed can go to the appeals board. As it says, any decision by the code enforcement officer or the planning board can be appealed to the appeals board. Yes.
Further comments? Yes, I'll get to you in a minute, Jeff.
I just, two quick things I want to mention. One, I appreciate everything you guys are doing to continue to make Parsonsfield more business-friendly. I think that's what the goal was to begin with. That's what we need. And second of all, if, let's just say, there were maybe 100 more people here that were against this, would all these questions be coming up now, looking for this to be tabled later on? I mean, let's just get it done.
Jeff, and then you had, after Jeff, Jeff.
Okay, I'm number 55.
All right.
And I think you can have a secret ballot because I think you just had a secret ballot when you voted for the moderator.
Yeah, he mentioned you can have one.
You can.
No, you can.
Somebody asked a motion for a secret ballot.
What it is, is a motion to fix the method of voting is the technical term for it. And without getting too far afield, there's a number of ways you can do that. All them that's for stand on this side, all them that's against stand on that side. That's called a division of the House. That's cool. Danielle has written ballots ready for you in case you need to do that. There's also the voice vote, where everybody tries to holler louder than the other guy. So there's a number of ways to fix the method of voting. Anything else, Jeff?
There's no yes and no just on the guys that we have?
Well...
He means this was just to say that you're in the town of Parsonsfield.
Yeah, that yellow card is certification that you are a registered voter in the town of Parsonsfield. Because if you ain't, you can't vote.
And if we just had a yes or no, we're going to serve a yes or no.
Danielle's got it all taken care of at a much higher level. Got this worked out for you. Anything else, Jeff? Yeah, I keep...
Afternoon. I apologize if this is an ignorant question. I'm trying to be more involved with my town in these votes, as is my wife. And one question I have is, does the town allow any type of proxy vote, a side vote, a write-in vote for these type of ballots? As it is, me and my wife would never be able to both engage with these votes with the town.
Town meeting does not allow for proxy votes. You gotta be there, and you gotta stick your hand in the air or whatever.
So the issue is that with two small children at home and a small farmer to take care of, it makes it very difficult for... There's really no chance for the two of us to be two voting adults contributing.
That's a matter of state law. It's not just me being a meeting. Further questions, comments? John, briefly, please.
Matt, my original comment about Village Residential versus Village. If we want to preserve the feel of this town, the only businesses historically have been small-town stores, and that's it. You have approved this for all village residential zoning. I think that's a violation of the sentiments that have been expressed in this town for as long as I've worked here. We're a town of residents. Cornish is developing left and right. We don't have to follow their lead. Those questions have never been answered.
Yes, sir?
Well, I appreciate your comments, sir. I'm in a business in the village of Peter Falls. I'm very proud of all that business down there. I think we do very good things. And I'm very proud of employing people down there. My neighbor Trevor Sandborn and my former neighbor Colleen, who I own some of their business recently. And I think that one of the things that our community really, really, really thrives upon is more business. To employ people to work here locally and have families not have to travel 45 minutes to an hour to just earn a living for their families away from here, you know? And anything, regardless of what industry it is, that we can bring to our community to do that and to open whatever business it is, whether it's marijuana to textile, whatever we can bring. And be present as friendly, we should be open to that. And for people that are wary of marijuana, I think we need to recognize that it is here in our community, it's been in our community here for decades. And I understand that there are problems as far as smell and things like that that have been causing problems. And this ordinance provides some protections for you that have never been able to be addressed because you can finally call a CEO who can go out and inspect those things that you haven't been able to call the state to go look at. And, you know, like, I know we all need to preserve what we have as far as our community atmosphere and our small-town way of life. And I believe in that. And I believe that we can do that, and we can do that responsibly. But, you know, this ordinance, the way that it's structured here isn't perfect, and I believe it will change over time. I think we all agree it could have been better written. But it is what it is. And it opens a door to a few businesses and a few more employees in town and a better way of life. So I hope that some people will join me in this yes vote here in town.
Yes.
Catherine Libby, I live here in Parsonsfield. I love Parsonsfield. I have a business in Cornish. And I know that falling to feel like Cornish is a bad thing. I've kind of taken my business there because Parsonsfield rejected an opportunity to have my antique shop in Parsonsfield. So we've taken it there instead. I don't see that Cornish is a bad place. Our parking situation is bad. That's true. The construction hasn't helped anything. But spreading that out, it helps the taxpayers. I have a quarter of acre of land or less in Cornish. I'm paying over $4,000 worth of taxes. You talk about getting your taxes back and not having children in the schools. We are the way to do it. We have decent, small businesses. Don't push us out.
Just going off of what JP said, those small businesses employ local contractors, which make our businesses grow. It's super important to us. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to just add that, one, this has been... The town has been invited to contribute to this conversation and follow it since at least August, if not before. I know that you guys did a great job kind of all people. Invite people to send emails for your consideration regarding this. So I do think it's appropriate that we're doing this today this way. And, you know, we've all had it. The invitation to be involved in this conversation has been out there for a while. Secondly, I just want to kind of hit what JP is saying a little bit. As another small business owner here, it's going to provide jobs in this neighborhood. It sounds sort of like part of your concern is that we're going to have, like, big cannabis moving to town. And as it is right now, we have a lot of small business owners already here that are cultivating legal. And what this ordinance or whatever it's technically called is going to do is to allow the town to be involved in enforcing anything that any of you might have complaints about in regard to those businesses. Whereas right now, it's only at a state level, and there's no one in town you can go to if you do have a problem with a person who's already growing next door. And as has been said, this is already here. You know, it's been here since long before it was legal. So at least this way, the town can benefit and have a voice in it.
Anybody we haven't heard from on this article? Anybody, anybody of everybody that we haven't heard? David.
Well, I have mixed feelings about what I'm going to bring up here, but I am going to do this. And I would like to make a motion that we fix the type of vote on this to be a written ballot.
Would that still happen right now?
Second. Does that end? No, that does not end the discussion until either the moderator does or somebody moves a question and we get a majority on that. The gentleman has made a motion to fix the method of voting as a written ballot. Gentleman has made a motion to fix the method of voting as a written ballot. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Method to fix the method of vote, um, a motion to fix the method of voting is not debatable. All those in favor of voting by written ballot, please hold your yellow cards in the air. Okay, it's going to be close. Those opposed? John, I just want to get a... Okay, let's, we'll get our clerks in place and we'll, we'll do it for real to get a number count. Okay, so what we're going to do is one clerk is going to count on this side of the orange line. Not with your side and and we're going to have to have you move your chair to either one side or the other of the orange line. Can't sit on the border. Okay, okay. The motion is to fix the method of voting as a written ballot. All those in favor?
Hold them up high, please.
Nice and high. You get tired, you can use your other arm. What you got?
I got 37.
What?
37.
Okay. 28, 37. I gotta do some ciphering here. 65, 4. Those against?
Are you up? Eight. Eight.
Seven and eight. The vote is 65 in favor of a written ballot, 15 opposed. We will, when the time comes, use a written ballot. Now, is there any more discussion or are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote? Oh, two cards up.
Uh, no, 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 we're not, we're not ready. No. We'll get to a vote again. One of my faults as a moderator is I let people talk too much. But again, you came here, we're going to try to get you, you won't make it for Wheel of Fortune, but you will get home for Jeopardy. Andy, briefly, please.
Yeah, briefly. I'm a little uncomfortable with all this business talk, to put it bluntly. I'm nothing against anybody's business, but their job is not to promote business in this town. Everybody needs to remember that. You know, I don't think that that goes against anything that you guys are doing. Select board is supposed to represent everybody, not to be more friendly to business. And I think my intuitive feeling, which I can't back up, is that in the wing somewheres, there are people waiting for this to happen so they can jump on some opportunities they see. I think that's what's feeding this.
John, you had something? And I got a couple over here. John first.
My comments were misunderstood by thinking that I'm against business.
Speak right up, please, John. Can you?
I've been a construction small businesses for a long time. I'm not against business. What I'm against is putting businesses in the historic villages. Peter Falls is our business hub. There should be businesses there. There should be good businesses there. You mentioned you've moved your business to Cornish. That is a travesty because you have the ideal kind of business. Now, so the issue for me is we've got seven villages. We want to put different kinds of businesses in every one of those villages. That's what this ordinance is saying you want to do. Why not?
Okay, I saw two.
The looking feel of the town.
I saw a couple of hands over here. Who are they? Did you have your hand up or you were just stretching?
I did because I thought you already spoke, you were done. That's what you.
No, no, no. It's just that if you've already spoken, you get last priority to those who have not. So, yes, sir. Briefly, please. Yeah, that's you.
I'd just like to say that, you know, one thing that I love about this town is that we are predominantly, you know, all of our businesses are almost all owner operated. And I think that's why a lot of us are here. And for the record, I'm not in the cannabis industry. I just, I, I think that it's kind of outrageous to say that part of what our select board, what we hope that they'll do for us is to support local businesses and local growth and end up hiring local people. So like JP said, people will have rather power in Portland just to pay the bills.
Yes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Price. Yesterday I saw his one for $3,000 maker. It's not her money. It's not my money. I'm not buying that. Businesses are mostly owner operated, but who owns the building right now? So sure, let's do this, but let's be wary. Let's just be careful. Let's make sure the next one, let's make sure we hold our planning board accountable. There's a lot of people here that don't show up to a lot of meetings. Let's make sure we have them involved if we see that change.
Capheners has ownership of Village Variety. And to answer your question, it's because Parsons Field has never been helpful to our local small businesses. So I got out when it was time to get out because I got sick of the bullshit. That's my, my comment.
Okay, yes. The orange top.
If this passes, and we all know it from, you know, there will be specific regulations and rules. I mean, they're just not going to say, I'm going to grow all this, do this and sell this. Somebody's got to watch these people. Am I correct? Who's going to give that?
Select board?
Again, the OCP, the Office of Cannabis Policy, has very strict controls on cannabis industry and our CEO.
So he'll be going around, he or she will go on, visit these places to make sure that they're like not selling to 12 year olds. I don't know, but you know what?
Yeah, that, that will get them shut down very quickly by OCP. Yeah.
Yes, and the blue top, you haven't spoken yet.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that the biggest thing I have, I mean, I'm not for this, I'll be honest. But one of my biggest pet peeves is the smell is incredibly bad. I live near it and I go out at 6 o'clock in the morning, I can smell it. I come home in the afternoon, I can smell it. It smells like stunk and the whole neighborhood, all our kids are smelling it. The people that come to visit the community, they smell it and I don't think that that's right.
Briefly, yes, sir.
I was just going to say, I mean, when we talk about small businesses.
Everybody else be quiet, please. Listen to the gentleman.
How many businesses are we talking about that want to open up in the town? I mean, how, this very small town, how many pot shops do you actually need in downtown Keys Falls? One pot shop can stretch. In New Hampshire, is people going to be able, New Hampshire is not legal. So we're a bullet town. I mean, are they going to be able to come over? The increased traffic, we don't even have a sheriff. We don't have nothing. I mean, it's going to be increased traffic. People are going to be coming into Parsons Field to buy pot. Simple as that.
Jeff, briefly?
Sometimes I listen to meetings and I hear things. We're going to try to preserve the village, but sometimes people gobble up houses around their business and tear them down and turn the area into a big commercial park. So, you know, just to let people know that somebody could come in and just start buying houses and tear them down and build a big facility. Just saying.
Yes.
Aren't some of these places growing already in like East Parsons Field and stuff that are under the state level that you don't have any control of? So whether this passes or not isn't going to stop that because they're under state control. They can have them no matter what. So, you know, as long as they pass the state requirements, the town can't stop that. East Parsons Field is like that. And as far as visual town looks and worrying about how the towns look, drive through East Parsons Field, marijuana is maybe a smelly problem, but there's a lot of other issues down there that has nothing to do with marijuana.
Yes.
Can I make a motion? We move the question?
You can do that. Do I hear a second? It's been moved and seconded to move the question. What that means is we terminate debate and go to a vote. I'm going to try it by, by a quick show of hands and, you know, if it's, if it's a big majority, we won't make the clerks count, but we may have to go that way. So, a motion to move the question, i.e. limit debate, is not debatable. All those in favor are moving the question? Those opposed? The, the motion is, is passed and accepted. We will now proceed to do a written vote. And just so that we don't have a mob scene, Danielle, did you want front row and then next row and then next row? What we'd like to do is feed people in row by row and we'll get everybody and all that. Before we do the vote, before we actually stand up and vote, I would like to say that there are two types of articles that give me the willies as a moderator. One is gravel pets and the other is cannabis. This has been, this has been a pretty darn good meeting. I have been impressed with the quality of debate and the tone of the debate. You've done darn good. Voting will begin now. First row, please.
I wish somebody would turn on that fan. Keep an eye on it.
My leg's just sweet.
You all right?
Yep.
Glad I decided to sit in the front.
What's that?
We should have told everybody, sit in the front and get out of here quicker.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt.
You think people are going to leave before they hear the results?
No.
Hey, we're in the first row, aren't we?
No, I'll wait.
Okay.
A fan can be turned on though.
Yeah.
Norm, thanks. Taking everybody's questions. That was lengthy.
Yeah, it was, but again, especially on high emotion.
Yes, you knew it would be.
You gotta do it and you know you're gonna get battered around.
I'm top by the way.
Where you get the big bucks, huh?
Makes it so worthwhile.
Yeah.
I just want to confirm, you vote yes if you're for and no if you're against.
Correct, yes.
Because you know the political.
I know. You never know.
So I just wanted to make sure. I was hoping that you would mention that. You know what I mean?
Probably was a good point. Yes means you're voting in favor of this. Okay, you're right. Probably would have been a good thing.
They can batch?
Not for this one. For the. Right. You know, I, I totally agree. I would have much preferred to have it on a written ballot. I come forth about it. Yes, you'd get a bigger crowd for sure.
No discussion. Everybody in this room. When the milk with the Cheerios is part.
As I like to say, it's all been scientific.
Yes.
You know, and I think it's a damn ordinance.
I looked it over. I read the whole.
I think it's a great ordinance that allows the town to, you know, listen. I don't know if.
Are they carrying the votes tonight or is that?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah. Stick around.
How you doing? Okay, right? Oh, yeah.
Thank you for your service. There you go. My first one, so.
Well, don't make it your last. See ya.
Take care.